Good morning, everybody. We're here at staff meeting Tuesday, August the 5th. Tom, take it away.
Thank you. One item today, commissioners. We're going to talk about the, we're going to begin talking about legislative platform. Several weeks ago, the Kansas Association of Counties put out a distribution advising they were building their platform and they wanted, from the 105 counties, any input that we Cedric County want to give to their platform. So that's the purpose of the meeting today. For the public, I just might kind of summarize quickly how our platform is generated here. This starts the process, but we also do our own Cedric County platform, which is much too early to discuss that yet. That's in October, November. We then do a joint platform with other local partners, City Wichita, GWP, The Chamber, and others that we will formulate after our platform is done. In the middle of that now also is a group of what are called the Big Five Counties, which started in and had hawk fashion last fall where as the session was going on, there was some thought amongst, and it emanated, I think, from Johnson County, and they reached out to the chairman and I and Tanya and Jason Watkins, with the purpose being that if the Big Five Counties got together, which represent the bulk of the population of the state, that we maybe could have a little bit of, yield a little bit of more of a stick at, at the state level. So there is that group and that is still in existence. In fact, Tanya will talk about an event we're going to have with them in the middle of September, where we're hosting the other four large counties coming down to for a get together for commissioners to get involved in a discussion. So there's many layers and processes for the legislative platform here. And of course, Jason oversees all this, our lobbyist, does an excellent job. But for today, I think we focus on the KAC component of this and more to come on the rest of the platform. And Tanya will cover that as she, as she goes through this presentation.
Okay, so thank you, Tom. So to follow up on everything that Tom mentioned, I sent out an email yesterday. As he mentioned, KAC put out an email requesting any counties, if they're interested, to put in a request for items for their legislative platform. So last year, we put in four items and they did incorporate it in their platform. However, we put in very specific items. How that made it on their platform were not as specific. So I just want to make that clear. So, and so as, as Tom mentioned, it's a little bit early to get into our legislative platform. We'll get into that a little bit earlier this year as Jason had recommended. So I would say probably mid-August, I'll start putting out an email to departments asking for what they'd like to see on our platform and then start engaging commissioners. So being that it's early, I don't have anything from departments to put on our legislative platform. However, I know that Commissioner Howell had engaged Justin Flor some items for our legislative platform this year. And I sent out an email to you all with three bullet points that I felt that, and what I'm kind of looking for to maybe add to KAC's platform, are items that would, would really be statewide for counties. Even, I think three of those items look like they had potential to be something that maybe if you're interested, for a case in that one. And so those three bullet points, I put in that email and I'm happy to go over those. First item is to enact language that allows county to take action to protect public from dangerous animals, while also ensuring that the owners of such animals are afforded constitutional due process. So that could potentially be one item. Second item then is to amend KSA 64101B to be non-uniform with respect to counties so that counties like cities would have the flexibility to consider alternative methods of publication in addition to traditional newspaper publication, which could result in spare savings. And then the third item we gave to KAC last year, it did make their platform. The only reason I put this on here again is to see if we want to be as specific as we were last year and see if it, if it makes any specific, specific. Thank you, Lindsay, for KAC this year. I don't know that it will, but it's, it's an opportunity to see if we can, if we can get it on there. So that item is legislation either appropriating additional budget for the county election officer and county appraiser officer, or be the state taking over full control of these functions offices. So I throw that out there as discussion. I think I'll kind of hand it over maybe to chairman and commissioners to see if you want to start the discussion there and happy answering questions as we.
Thank you. Appreciate you taking the lead. This feels early, but it's, I understand why we're moving it and having this discussion. Any thoughts or questions from the commission on things that we would want to contend for on the KAC platform?
Thank you, Chairman. I want to address some of the appraiser issues. I see that, you know, we had some on there last year and then I've got a handful of things that I've been working on. I don't know. I apologize. I didn't send anybody any copies or anything, but I can kind of read through them if you like. The first one I put on here is require each accounting appraiser to post and maintain data regarding property tax appeals and valuations within the county on a website. It's available to the general public, some kind of dashboard or something like that. I'd like to, um, next item is same issue with, all these are going to be with the appraiser. Broaden the eligible pool of candidates for county appraisers. Positioning by the KSA 19-430 to no longer limit county appraisers to individuals with three or more years of mass appraisal experience. Just kind of looking at, is there such a thing as maybe somebody has, you know, statistics background or MBA with so many years of real estate? Just, just looking at, you know, opening the pool candidates, maybe more leadership opportunities. And the next one, I'd enact legislation where each county would have the option of establishing an intermediary hearing panel that could hear and potentially resolve tax appeals before the matters be heard by the Board of Tax Appeals Small Claims Division. Something to kind of keep it more internally instead of trying to resolve the issues locally because the time is, you know, I think we've all seen the articles out there and reflector and stuff, how, how long it's taken to, to get these through. I personally know I'm sitting on some for three years and still haven't heard them yet. And then a lot of that's manpower and stuff. So if we can take care of some of that stuff within our own county, it doesn't have to go that far. And the last one is enact a law that requires determinations from the Board of Tax Appeals to be reached within one year of the appeal being filed with the board unless otherwise agreed by the parties.
Thank you. Tanya, you got that? Any questions or?
And I can get you a copy.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't, I have.
I'll get you a copy of those.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Commissioner Bluebaw. I'm sure.
Just a couple of comments. Yeah, I love Jeff's passion on this topic and I mostly agree with everything he said. On, on the, the intermediate panel, isn't that just called the Hearing Officer Panel? We can do that today. We already have the 40 under the state. We'll have to do that right now.
And that, that is a question that you have posed with that, the cost, and we are working on that information for you now and should have that shortly. So that yes, because you can establish it anytime, what that annualized cost is estimated to be depending on how you make up that group.
But, but let's, I'd like to stop for, so commissioners, four points. Justin, is there anything legally prohibiting us from doing? I mean, other than the item number two, which was the broader pool of candidate, they, they PVD sets that, but a dashboard, intermediary panel, which Commissioner Howell just brought up, and of course, four would have to require state action to it. Can we do two and four locally now?
Good question, Tom. Justin Wyner, County Counselor. The second item in terms of, well, let me back up. When you said items two and four, item two would have been the broadening the pool of candidates that currently now that couldn't be.
I'm sorry, one and, one and three.
One and three. Okay, item one. No, you're correct, Tom. We could do that on our own. I believe the will from Commissioner Bluebaw indicating that would be to have that be a requirement for all counties. But yes, you're right. We could do that today. The, well, I say today, there's obviously logistics and, you know, IT and data that would all be involved in that, but legally we can do it. Item three, enacting legislation of the intermediary hearing panel. I think, believe part of what Commissioner Bluebaw is asking there is as well as that the state would fund that instead of, and that it would be, and maybe, yeah, there may be some tweaks in terms of how that's set up. Currently, we would be, the counties would be responsible for this. And I think that kind of ties into the, the carryover third point that Tanya mentioned, which would be that the state, you know, this is essentially a state function to a large degree. Commissioner Bluebaw has in mind a process where you can have these hearings handled at a local level in an expeditious fashion, but maybe not having to have the county taxpayers.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, all these initiatives. I guess that's why I'm asking for this platform because I'd like to get state funding to help pay for it.
There is a cost on the panel. And as Lindsay mentioned, we're doing some work on it. It's not cheap. So. Yeah, I, I was actually, I got total agreement on the dashboard. I think that that can be done today. So I think that's a great, great idea. I agree with all four things that he talked about. I think two of those we could do now, but on the Hearing Officer Panel, does that replace a part of what the state already does in terms of BODA? Or is it just in addition to?
They're either to Tom Henry or appraisal friends. It looks like Tom Henry's making his way to the podium.
I think there still is an informal hearing that happens before that Hearing Officer Panel.
Tom Henry, Assistant County Counselor. So what that would do is it would add a level to the appeals process for property valuation essentially. So instead of going directly from the informal appeals at the accounting level to either the small claims or regular division of BODA, depending on the property type, you would then have the, the appeal would then flow through the local, the intermediary level.
Okay, so this initiative, it'd be another layer, if you will, another option. And the way the HO, the way the Hearing Officer Panel is allowed under current law, commissioners can sit on there themselves or they can have an appointment, correct?
If they meet certain minimum requirements, there's a couple of IAAO classes. So IAAO is the International Association of Assessing Officers, I think, that you would have to take in order to meet those minimum qualifications. And I can send those to you if you want, but, but yeah, there's, there's a couple of things that would have to happen before you could sit on that panel.
And I would, I guess, getting back to the, the items that Tanya read a minute ago. I don't disagree with number three here, but that is a financial burden to the state to fund those. If I was going to just ask for my, my wishlist here, I would wish that they would take over the appraiser's office first. No offense to anybody in the room. But along with that, I would, I would like to just bring it back under the state of Kansas. So it would actually appear under the Department of Revenue. PVD would actually own the appraisers' actions of the state of Kansas. There's a lot of reasons for that. One of them, I think it creates consistency from county to county and region to region. Right now, I think that's, we're lacking that somewhat there in our state. Also, there is, there's no incentive to the state of Kansas on the work they perform because they don't receive revenue from their work that they do. And moving that one and a half mils off the state of Kansas budget gave them a opportunity to be completely unbiased or neutral on the appraisal process. Which I think is great. Again, our counties argued, one of the arguments against the county is there's arguments that we either inflate or deflate values for political reasons or for desire to see more money in the budget or whatever. And so that argument, in my opinion, the only way to really answer that is to remove it from someone who potentially has a bias. And so I think the people would feel a lot better knowing that there's not a motive from the county to do that. And then I guess along with that, if we're going to write a bill, it's already in the platform, I wanted to rename, rename the appraiser simply to, even if we don't get anything else done, this is non-financial, but really just give them, give them a new title. Because again, I would look at the operation of that office as a state agency. We fund the office much like we do the election office, but we don't have any operational control of what happens in the office. And again, I know there, I've asked the attorneys to opine on that a little bit. I think there's still some, in my opinion, we're not, I'm still not completely clear on exactly what we can and cannot do as a county. But anyway, so I would, I would like to see that, see the name of the appraiser changed to reflect, if you will, a state level of control of the operation of that office. And then finally, I, I still think this is, I mentioned this to a number of people in the State House. It seems like there is desire to do this. That would be, we would change the way the tax bills are sent out. So the December tax bill is for local government. Everything is not related to state or schools. And so everything that says USD on it would be a, would be a May payment and everything else would be a December payment. You can pay them both. We can, we can send out an advance notice early if they want to pay off both at one time. They could do that. But I like the idea of putting a flyer with, with the tax bill so they know what they're getting with their, with their tax payment. They're, they know what government they're paying for that, with that check. And in addition to that, it brings a lot of education, I think, when people see this is a check that covers all my local government. This is a check that covers all my educational needs for the state of Kansas. That, that clarity is worth every bit of it. And I don't see any reason not to do that. Some states have as many as four tax payments. They have to do city, county, schools, and state separately on some states. So I think we could do at least two. And if you want to, I would argue these are details, but I think if the county treasurer still wants to manage the, on behalf of the state of Kansas, still wants to manage the receiving of those checks. Other words, the office that you send your check to is still a local office. It's processed by a local person, much like the tag office does stuff on behalf of the state of Kansas today. The treasurer's office could do, receive tax payments on behalf of the state of Kansas for that, for that May payment. And I think we could process that. It would have to, it would require some things in place that currently don't exist. But I guess my point is it's legislation. I think it's possible to get there. So I love, I love Jeff's ideas, but I'd like to add to that. If it's acceptable to me, I would call this property tax reform or appraisal reform. It would be more of a comprehensive re, rate redefinition on how property taxes work in the state of Kansas. I think all of this blunts together and possibly one mega bill potentially.
Okay, very good. Any other thoughts? Tanya, how did number one, or maybe Justin, you might be helpful. How did number one with the dangerous animals, where did that come from?
And I'm looking at Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Howell is who had made the request, but I will note that our office is aware of what this is about. So I'll try to answer that as best I can. There's, it's not uncommon for municipalities to have powers if there's, for example, a dangerous animal. You think of a dog bite where dogs injured a person. Maybe let's say, even say it's happened on multiple occasions and they, you may want to take an action for a dangerous animal. Legally, that could, let's say the animal, the proposed action by the municipality would be to euthanize the, the dog, dangerous animal. That's technically a taking of someone's property. Traditionally, under Kansas law, and some of you as commissioners have been through this before, we went through a process to get nuisance abatement power specifically in Cedric County through a, an urban area bill, because there's a Kansas Court of Appeals opinion that pretty strictly limited the powers of counties through home rule to enact the taking. In that case, it was a nuisance property, but it deals with nuisances generally. A, a dangerous animal could also be classified as a nuisance under, under law. And so there is a concern that there may be a question as to what powers counties would have in that regard. And so the idea behind this request, and Commissioner Howell can clarify if he wants to, my understanding is to have a, an explicit authority for counties to be able to do something in this case, if there is a dangerous animal up to and including taking the property away. Again, being very, very much recognizing the value of property rights and constitutional due process. Usually there'd be a, a hearing process in that. But right now there are some questions in terms of the full extent of what's authorized.
That makes sense. I appreciate the background.
If you don't mind, basically, we have some parts of Cedric County that are very urban-like. So it's almost like it's a city. But we don't have any way to control a, a dog that's roaming the neighborhood that's, that's causing a lot. And again, other people have suffered personal loss. It wasn't human loss, but it was loss and it was very devastating. And the county frankly doesn't have a lot of power to really do anything. So our process of issuing a ticket and appearing before a judge, then, then basically there's continuances, there's, there is a, it's a very long process. Meanwhile, the dog may be still be running free. And then if they pay the fine, the process resets itself and it has to start completely over again. We don't really have any power to really do much. And so this would help us have a little bit more ability in some cases. And if I told you the story, it's heart wrenching what happened. But we sit back and we don't have any ability to address this in a, in a reasonable way. It is a, my opinion, a, a problem with county government not being trusted to do things that make sense. This, what we ended up with does not make sense. And we have to do more. So.
Appreciate that. Commissioner Meister was joining on Zoom. He's just now present with us at the table. So anything else you'd like to add?
I mean, something that I see on the KAC handout that you gave us, and that has been a recent issue that has come up is under local control freedoms for community. This, this came up in Andale with a unilateral annexation where we have county residents that don't have an elected that has a seat at the table on those issues. I'd like to see some discussion or around that and what we can do to not overstep these cities and their home rule, but to represent the constituents of the county and ensure that we have, if it's 100% opposed, for example, that perhaps it needs to go through the same process that a zoning case would go through or, or something similar. So if we can keep that kind of at top of mind, it was a really big deal in our, in my district. I know it's not going to be the, the last time it comes up. And if we can stay ahead of it and maybe have a little bit more of a say or, or at least an opinion in it, that would be great.
Chairman, may I? Please. So I've been talking about this now, almost the entire time I've been a county commissioner. And I've brought this up numerous times to KAC. The reason that statement's on there right now is because last year as a delegate to the KAC, we did have this on our platform last year and using that plus a discussion here, I think it was a staff meeting or DOCC meeting, I went as a delegate and advocated to add this to the KAC platform to the large room where they voted on this. We amended the, we amended their platform the morning this, this was adopted. And so that's on there as a consequence of our work that we did last year. It's the first time this has appeared on their platform. But Mike Taylor with the KCCA has sent out recent notes, which is interesting because his history is, he's a municipal lobbyist for many years. But recently he sent out a note that talked, it seemed like he was at least open to the idea of KAC pushing this forward as a larger platform issue for the KAC. It's in one of the recent communications they sent out. But this is a, an issue. By the way, what I discovered through this Andale incident was there is another statute that's not, not mandated, but it's there and where the cities could use the second statutes right behind the one that they do use. The net very next statute listed is a process whereby the county can, can do this. Once again, there's no tax revenue opportunities for the county. We don't, we don't receive another dollar during annexation of a city taking over unincorporated property. It doesn't change our budget one bit. So in a sense, again, going back to a non-biased, a neutral party to make the best decision, the county is uniquely qualified to do that. The cities, I think, should use that other statute. Not the one they do use that provides unilateral annexation powers, but it simply engages the county to lead on, if you will, a consideration of annexation through that process that's dictated in that second set in that statute that's right behind the one that, that they use. So there is a process. All I would have to ask the state to do is simply, I think, allow a county to, should say not allow, but, but use that other statute as a way for annexations to happen. But right now we give the, it would give these people a voice. I can think, I can think of the Andale thing. I thought of a number of things that could have happened. It would have been a lot more, I mean, it would have been a lot better, better than what actually was proposed. But anyway, there is a statute right now that does work very, very well. We just need to get the state to, I guess, put some priority on that statute versus the one they currently use.
I appreciate that. I do have a question on motor vehicle fees. Where is that in this, in KAC's? Did it not make it over? Is that something that we have on our platform? This will be another conversation that we're having. Justin, you're in those rooms. Is this a discussion that?
I apologize, Chairman. I can't recall if that was discussed. And I don't know if, I think Tanya was in some of those. Did we bring that up last year, Tanya?
Okay.
And did they? Did that, that didn't specifically make it in here. I, I think Chairman, as a general rule, and I, you're, you're right, I am on the KAC board and on the KAC legislative discussions. One of the things that I know the KAC will do routinely, not just with our requests, but from other counties as well, is they'll lump them into other existing ones and kind of say, hey, that fits within the parameters. They use this more of as a delegation document to their legislative policy staff. But I, I again, I know that was something that the board felt very strongly about this last legislative session. And so I think it could, you know, if the board still feels strongly, it's, it could make sense to recommend that as a standalone item because of the financial impact it's had.
And if I can jump in, just as, if you have not had a chance to look at every single page of your recommended budget book, you will see that for 2026, our planned subsidy to that tag office is at 955,000 for next year. So it is a significant financial impact to the County General Fund. I know Brandy is here and I know the Treasurers Association has worked hard on this, but certainly I think if there's an opportunity for KAC to bring it up with some specificity, that would be wonderful. Like Brandy's kind of.
Yeah, Brandy. Commissioner Meister has some questions and.
Brandy, thanks for joining us. I know last year when this came up, you were also put into some good effort in the Association of Treasurers. What, there's 105 counties? How many are there? Treasurers, 60 or something, you're saying?
That are.
That, I mean, you're, but you're engaging all of the.
Yes, there's 105 counties. And when we have our annual meetings, the last meeting we had, there was 87 of the treasures out of the 105 treasures there. And we're all on board on how to engage the, the legislature to somehow update statutes so our fees can increase or more funding can come to the tag office than what is currently there.
Is there any update on, is there any solid plan or Plan A, B, or C that you all agree on?
We've tried multiple methods. We've, we've tried with increasing fees. We've tried with reallocating the fees. And it just, everything that we've been directed towards, try this method, this will work this time, it falls through. And it never, it never passes, it might, might pass the House, never passes the Senate or vice versa, passes Senate, that doesn't make it out of the House. So we're, we're just stuck and we're at this moment, we're kind of at a, a point where we're scrambling to figure out what's our, what's our step because we, we've tried several different options and nothing seems to work. And we're just, we're still at the same point where we're all short and we can't, we can't fund our offices.
Is there any discussion amongst the treasurers of, of the state moving towards privatization of the tag office?
No, there has not been discussion of that. I know in Topeka, there is an entity that does run a tag operation. They do make more funding. They do get, they do get, get more of the fees, but it's considered a contract on a contract basis. And they face, since we're agents of the state as treasurers, they don't see it as they can do a contract basis with us so we can kind of set our fees. But as far as going private, no, that's not.
Is it, Missouri, it has that model?
I'm not 100% sure.
I think it's Missouri that has that model. And, and again, the, the tag office is, is essentially administrative function. And I, I know that they're handling money, but if they have the training and certification and on your licensing or whatever is required to do that, if they had the, the authority to do this on behalf of the state of Kansas, it's much like sales tax where you're collecting money and remitting that back to the state and you, and you collect a fee in the process. And so there is a model that you go from one or two tag offices in Cedric County to potentially several hundred tag offices in Cedric County because an insurance salesperson might have a tag office in their, in their storefront, for example, or whatever. They would be able to do that as a secondary function with, you know, in charge of fee. They already have a overhead of, of running an office. And so it's just a, it's a model that I think works in Missouri that I'm not sure whether the states might have that, but something that I've heard talked about a little bit on the side. something that I've heard talked about a little bit on the side. I would assume the Treasurers Association is probably not for that. But if we're going to advocate as a commission for a solution to this problem, I'd like us at least to have a discussion about maybe asking the state to, you know, consider privatization of the, of the office.
And that, to my knowledge, that hasn't been discussed at the Treasury Association. We do meet again in September. I do serve on the executive board, so it is something that I, I more than happy to bring up to the Treasury Association, just, just for discussion, just to get some feedback.
And I would, I would expect they would not be in favor because of the, the the title that you guys carry. But in terms of as a county commissioner, if I was trying to think of a good solution to the community that would make this a much more accessible office and maybe lower the fees overall, because people are already running storefronts, if you will. This just, if you will, adds another opportunity for people who are already in the business of doing administrative functions. I, I think it's an opportunity. I would rather see us have a discussion not just about raising fees, but maybe changing the way it's done in Kansas to look maybe in Missouri as, as well follow. Thank you.
Any questions for Brandy on this? Appreciate it, Brandy. Anything we can do to lean on KAC to help us in this pursuit, I think would be, we're obviously going to address this in our platform. This was one of the things that we, the big five county discussions. There's a lot of difference of opinions in those big five counties, but one of the things that we did agree on and all lobbied last year together on was this motor vehicle fee situation. So it's going to come up again. Anything we can lean on KAC, I think it'd be helpful.
And Chairman, I, I think something that could be worth pushing on that, if, I mean, I obviously I'm just saying is there, there's a listing of ten legislative priorities that KAC has in that platform. I know that was one of the priority items for this board last year. It could be a potentially a request at that item specifically, if that's where the board's at, to try to see if that's one they would consider as a legislative priority, just because of the financial impact.
I, I would be in favor of that. Could we? Any other thoughts?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Commissioner Howell is pointing out that there's ten items on pages one and two of the KAC platform from last year that are indicated as legislative priorities. I think part of the push could be to try to get that to be a specific priority. Just because of the financial impact.
Good for that. The more issues that we can raise, the more awareness around this, I think, the better it's going to be for us. So in our success in our own legislative platform. John, anything else? Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
I, to my previous comments, I guess I would ask the commissioners here to hone in on the appraisers office on that third bullet that Tanya had read. I would, I would like to see us strike most of the sentence in the middle. So it should say something like legislation appropriate additional budget for the county appraisers office or the state taking over full control of these functions and offices. I mean, that's just keep it simple and keep it directed at one thing. I think you'll be more successful. So if you agree that the election office is, is an issue, I agree. But if you want to put the priority on the one that really makes the biggest bang for the buck here, I don't think you're going to get two. Let's just ask for one. That, that would be the one I'd ask for. So that's just, I recommend we make an adjustment to that statement.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that. On you, you have your unique?
No. Sure I have.
Okay.
Corey, you asked me just to give you an update on the countywide sales tax enforcement. We're still waiting on sales that are on special committee on taxation to meet. Senator Karen Tyson has not called any dates yet on that committee. So as soon as we hear more, we'll let you know. But as of now, there's no dates when that committee is going to meet. Okay. Okay. So if you don't mind, what I'd like to do is just go back through and make sure I have everything that you want to put forward to KAC for platform. So what I've heard more than four items that Commissioner Blue brought up, and I'm going to go back to you, Commissioner, to those. Okay. And then are we good to add the three items that I have on the email, which is the dangerous animals? The second one is we want to, do we want to do the publications? Do we want to add that on there?
Are we solving a problem there? Okay. And that's a problem solved?
Third one is that you just gave me the ads, but that was, we're taking out the elections and just adding the appraisers. Okay. So then I have the unilateral annexation, just adding that on there. And then we're adding the county treasurer fees.
Thanks.
Okay. So then the, the two other items, I just want to be clear on, are we adding the item on renaming their appraiser? Is that, is that an item we're adding? That's, that's currently on our legislative platform. Or do you want to skip that? And because we've got quite a bit of appraiser stuff.
Aye aye.
Maybe add that. I would just have a topic called property tax appraisal reform. Add that to the list. That's one of the items on that list. So I think all this stuff that Commissioner Blue boss stated, plus foot lanes I stated, and add that one too.
So then on that one, are we adding the two tax bills being sent?
I think it's a great idea. We're gonna, we're asking for a big, this is a big overhaul here. And do we, I guess the question we need to ask ourselves is do they lump this into one thing or are they going to piece smell this and say, yeah, we like this, we don't like this, we like this, we don't like this? If we put too much on, do we risk losing all of it?
I think comprehensively, they belong together in the bill. They might, they may not all survive to the end, but I think when you say property tax appraisal reform bill, and it's got six or seven things in there that are all related to changing how this is done in Kansas, they have to stay together, at least initially.
Why don't I write this up and then send it out to commissioners for your review and then go back through it. That sounds good.
Sounds wonderful. Very good.
Want to remind us when this is due to KAC? Is it the twenty first?
August twentieth.
Not going on that day.
And then can you talk about big budget?
Yes, I can. So as the manager mentioned, you talked about the big five. So Johnson County reached out to us and asked if we would be interested in hosting an event to start up the discussion between the big five, which is Sedgwick County, Johnson County, Wyandotte County, Shawnee County and Douglas County. Prior to our next legislative session. And so asked if we would host that. So we are hosting that on September twelfth from eleven to two in the Zoom boardroom. And so I will get that on all of the calendars. Just wanted to mention that to you today. So all of the, when you get that on the calendars and eventually we serve. You're welcome to stay the whole time. You don't have to, but for sure, let me make sure that you were, we're all invited and you can have to be there. And so for that typically commissioners will be there, manager will be there. And, and sometimes if they have a lobbyist, they'll stay in the video for the representative.
Their first time. Yeah, we had a, our first meeting was Friday, the eighth of November, twenty twenty four, and it was really pretty casual. But, you know, we don't have, I think the impetus of this meeting was these five big counties or urban counties, that there are some unique needs competitive to other counties throughout the state of Kansas. And we don't have full agreement on all the things that they were advocating for, and they don't have full agreement on all the things we were advocating for, but we found a couple of things that we could jointly advocate together on. And last year it was, it was what we look at our legislative platform and it was the constitutional amendment. They were, all five counties were strongly opposed to an amendment to the constitution on property tax and then the motor vehicle fees. So I think I envision it'll probably be a similar conversation. To where we'll talk about some of the things that we're going to advocate for, and we're going to hear what they want to advocate for and see if we can find some synergy somewhere. Okay, anything else?
What did you want to invite anybody from South Central delegation to be part of that?
I think it might be wise that maybe we get our our ducks in order before we, because this is about legislative approach before, but and I'm open to thoughts from the commission, but I, it might be wise to get our ducks in order before we approach legislators.
Are you, are you kind of thinking not have them there when we're making the sausage, so to speak?
Yeah. But I, I understand your point. I also think sometimes they need to understand the argument behind the discussion. Only here's the conclusion, but they don't know what happened to get to that. I, I see, I see two sides of that.
Worth consideration. I think that if we are going to have South Central people there, that they would probably want to have some of their folks in the room too, up there, but but it's worth the discussion. The idea obviously is to get in the room and try to have, find some synergies the best we can.
Yeah, I, I agree. Having them in there, I'm afraid it might create scope creep too, because you know, whatever it's disgusting there. And, and you know, we're probably going to come out of something different than what we could go in there with. So I just wouldn't want the legislator to you, you know, skew from what, what, what we agree that we think is important.
Okay, everybody. All wrapped up. See you tomorrow morning. Night, amen.
Can I say one thing real quick?
Sure.
Sorry. So we are two weeks out from big budget adoption day. So August twentieth, sir. Thank you for the knife and the heart there. So if you have motions, if you have any suggested changes to the budget, please let us know so we can get those drafted in concert with legal and get those to you. I think at one of the next two staff meetings, I'll probably ask Justin and or Tom Henry for us to go through what budget day will look like. Because we are going to do things a little differently than last year or any prior years, just to make sure we're fully in compliance with the R and R. So just kind of putting that out there for pondering. Thank God, we're getting closer.
Appreciate that. All right, all good. All right. See you tomorrow morning.